Okay. Consent agenda. Does anybody have anything to remove from the consent agenda? No? Okay. We need a motion. So move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Sergeant.
Okay. All right, all those in favor? Okay, great, thank you. It's all set. All right. Sandy. You know, she just walked in. But the first, we, Sandy Stein, everybody knows, I think, from the Board of Finance. And she had come to the Board of Finance meeting and, you know, kind of just given us some background. You know, last year, at the, you know, at the end of the budget process, you know, I think many departments had said, can we get, you know, a heads up sooner? Can we get some information upfront about what expectations are? And have that information available at the beginning or near the beginning of the process as opposed to later on. So Sandy's gonna tell us about all the wonderful things they're doing at the Board of Finance. Thank you.
Well, thank you for inviting me to come today. I think it's very important that the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen together really come up with parameters for all the departments, schools, boards, commissions, in terms of how to look at their budgets for next year. And I will share with you kind of what I know. I do understand that a budget has been passed, not by the governor, though.
Oh.
So it's still--
We were just talking about--
Yeah, it can still be vetoed. But I want to explain to you kind of what is the financial situation that we are facing, because I still feel that it's quite an unknown in terms of really what the town will be getting. So needless to say, we're entering kind of a precarious year related to budget funding from the state. And as you know, we do depend upon budget funding from the state for a number of different programs. The school's been one of them. So we actually, in our budget, had $660,000 for the ECS funding. It's education equalization or education cost sharing, which is between the state and the town. And we do not know if that's going to be available to us for now. So that is one of the challenges that we face. Maybe some of it will be available, maybe all of it, or maybe none of it will be available. But that is, that puts us in a kind of precarious position.
Sandy, I just want to make one clarification. So that's for this school year, 1718.
Yes.
And although we don't see that in our budget, it looks, it's revenue to the town. So in our budget, we don't see the revenue side of that. The educational cost share money was never part of our budget. It goes to the town. So the town expected $660,000, which now, you know, depending on what happens--
Right. We're just not sure. The other liability is basically the deficit in the teacher's pension fund, which you may or may not be aware of. And the cost estimate of that, if it gets passed back to all the cities and towns, just for Woodbridge, it's $1.3 million. So again, we don't really know if this will happen. But the teacher pension issue is a huge one for the state, short term and long term. And so even if they come up with a budget that does actually get passed, there's nothing to say, especially with the election, what will happen the following year. So we really need to think about what are our financial challenges in the coming years. And I wanted to just point out to you that we're not asking the Woodbridge Board of Education to come up with the money to fund these deficits. We're not turning back to you and saying, okay, well, the $660,000 that we didn't get, you need to come up with half of that money because we need that. We're not saying that. And we're not saying that if we get saddled with a portion of the teacher pension fund, that we're gonna come back to the Board of Ed and say, you have to, you know, help us fund this. Your budget is to run the school, and we understand that. But it's important for you to understand the economic challenges and financial challenges-- I guess I didn't like that message.
Yeah.
So is this okay?
Andy, can you hear okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're good.
Okay. So basically, at this point, what the Board of Finance is requesting is that the Board of Education keep your budget requests to 2% or less than what your current budget is for this year. And that we cannot actually afford for it to be higher than that as we go forward. And we know this is a challenge because things have already changed from the budget that you were approved for in terms of health insurance premiums, special education, other unforeseen situations. But again, we're not decreasing your budget, and I think that's a really important message. We're not saying come in less than last year. We understand that there are contractual obligations that you need to meet as a board. But we also know that there are financial constraints for the town. So we are saying to you, you know, look at a 2% overall increase or less if possible. But that you need to begin to think differently about what you do with that money. And how do you provide the programs and services that you feel are important for Beecher Road School? And I just want to let you know that this is the same message that we're delivering to all of the boards, all of the departments, and the commissions of the town. So what does that mean in terms of thinking differently? Well, it's really taking a look at being creative, looking at how you provide services. Can you actually do it differently? Are there some services or programs that you run that aren't absolutely essential? That are kind of nice to have, but not necessarily have to have? And how might you look at how much those cost? How many children, let's say, are benefiting from those programs? Or how many teachers are benefiting from the programs? It means maybe taking a look at class size or the type of support that you provide to each classroom. Or other support, actually, for the school overall. We're basically asking that we look at consolidation of services across the town. So when you look at IT, when you look at facilities, you look at maintenance, where can we actually all help to save some money if we work together to negotiate the same contracts, to use the same people, to use the same vendors? And again, we don't want to be prescriptive at all, but to give you some idea of where you might start to look in terms of changing how you do your business, how you provide your services. And we also want you to think about what are the criteria for a successful program? What would make you want to continue to provide certain programs? And what would make you say, you know what, I think that that doesn't rank as high from a prioritization perspective? When you look at, again, how much something costs, the types of services that are being provided, the number of children who are impacted, the number of teachers who are impacted. But it means that you have to kind of change your construct of what is business as usual. Because I don't think there's any way that you could meet the 2% request and do business as usual. I don't think that that will work. We have been very fortunate in this town to be able to provide a tremendous amount of resources to the schools. And that's really important. We all know how important education is in this town. This is why families moved here. This is why they stay. And we're very proud of the educational system that's been developed. We're asking you to basically look at tweaking that. And not turning it upside down, but really looking at where can you help us stay within the financial constraints that we know that we're going to encounter. We don't want to be in a situation where we're saying, we've got to turn back to you and because we didn't get all of our ECS sharing funds from the state, that we need for you to come up with. I don't want to see us get in the same situation as we were in last year. I think that you need some careful thinking and analysis to go into programmatically what can be different. And that's basically the message.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Sandy? We had asked, like I said, you know, for her to come. The Board of Finance had, you know, had come forward with their recommendation, you know, as the maximum increase for the Board of Education, any increase. But, so, we just wanted everybody to hear kind of the same message here, you know, out there. So does anybody have any questions for Sandy? No?
I mean, I think as you all know, the town doesn't have line item veto over items in your budget. Your budget is really up to you. It's just what the bottom line comes out to you. So you set your own priorities. You decide how you want to run the school, the educational system, the teacher ratios, all of that is yours to decide. It's just what can we sustain as a town as we understand the challenges that are getting greater and greater in the future for us.
And Sandy also participates. She's our liaison on the Board of Finance. So she is with us every month when we're going through the detail of the budget and the deficit and, you know, how things are starting this year and, you know, what we're looking at for next year. So Sandy is with us in all of that.
Any thoughts that you want me to take back to the Board of Finance?
Question. Okay. I think we have plugged it, yeah.
Sandy, thank you for that. And this is supplemental to what we talked about in the Finance Committee. I wonder, is the 2% as Beecher's approximately a third of the total town budget? Is 2% the sort of guidelines that we're hoping for each of the major programs and departments in the town? Because that doesn't seem to be getting to a potential 1.9 million deficit if we do have one from the state. So I guess I'm wondering where 2% sort of came up from. It might be helpful to everyone.
So sure. When we look at last year, the percentage of increases from the different sources of our budget, all the other, outside of education, the budget increase was less than 1% from all the other boards, commissions, town departments. That's what it rolled up to be. So that was the way that we could even sustain the request from the Board of Ed, which was over 4%. And we will not be able to do that again next year. And we would not expect that the deficits that we may have would come from the existing budget projections that we have. There are other options for looking at use of the general fund for a component of that. There might have to be an additional tax. And this would be for the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance to discuss how we can do that.
We appreciate your time, Sandy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And please feel free, if you have any questions or anything, to contact me and I'll bring those up to the session.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I think Bob-- Oh, no, PTO update.
I'm Joy Perdomo, and just giving you guys a quick PTO update. We met this week. And the ice cream social, which was held on August 30th, was a success. We also have a student sales fundraiser going on right now with the Charleston Wrap, Gift Wrap, began on 9/11, and it will continue through the beginning of October. There is also going to be a PTO Harus hike at the Alice Newton Memorial Park on October 4th at 4:00 PM. Hoping to have good weather for that and a good turnout. Picture days are going to be held here for all the students on September 27th and September 28th. Planning has begun for the Halloween Hoot, which will take place on October 21st from 11:30 to 3:30. It's our biggest fundraiser, and ticket sales will begin soon. We're also going to be doing a PTO bi-weekly email blast this year. So that will be, you know, hopefully keep people in the know, you know, better. We have a Facebook page, which happened, I think, the latter part of last year, too. But lots of people are asking to be added from the orientations that went on. The parents showed up, and I think they were getting right on it right away, so that was good. And we're also going to be doing our taste testing again that we did last year in the cafeteria. So every other month, we get the kids to try something different. And this October 12th, we're gonna be doing black bean and corn salad. And that's it.
Does anybody have any quick--
Could you see that the Board of Ed members are on the PTO email blast?
Sure.
It's included in that because Margaret doesn't have children. I don't have children in the district, so I'd be interested in receiving that.
Absolutely. We'll make sure of it.
Great, thank you. Thanks. Anybody have any questions for George?
Thank you for everything you do.
Thanks.
Sorry, did you--
No, I say great.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Did one thing. Last year was my first year here. I enjoyed every single PTO event to the max. It was great. You guys have a great job with everything. The fundraising is amazing. There was one event that took place that a few of us went on, but there was only a few of us. I think somehow communication didn't get out the way maybe it was intended, but it was the hike. And I enjoyed the hike very much. It was only like four of us who went on the hike.
Last year, yeah.
So I think you guys are aware of that, but just to make sure, because it's something that I think people would really enjoy for a community of, you know, PTO members and their kids and all of that, so.
Yes, there is a flyer, and I'm gonna thank you for saying that, because that, when we met, it was supposed to go out, and where it's gonna be here before we know it. I'll make sure that that flyer is ready to go. I believe I'm barely new on the executive board, but I'm pretty sure all those types of things get kind of cleared through the superintendent's office, and then it can go in the kids' backpacks, you know, get sent home with them. So if you don't get it, you know, then let us know so that we can make sure that that happens, okay?
Okay. The blasts are a place where everybody can click on it and go from there.
They're doing a lot with the Facebook, but again, I know there's only a fraction of people that are getting those, because not everybody's synced up with that. So, you know, we still need to get it in the kids' backpacks, and the email blast, I think, will be good. I think they were doing some tweaks, though, with sort of the, all of the emails. There was a glitch last year that happened where there was some duplication or whatever, but they're getting that ironed out, and they're gonna start getting those out.
Okay, great. Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for all the work you do.
Thanks.
Okay. I think you are up, Mr. Cooper.
Welcome, everybody. We are into week four already of the new school year, and so I guess it's not so new after that, you hear that. But it certainly has been a smooth and successful opening for both staff and students. And I know Jean will have just a couple of other additional comments about that while we're off and rolling. Enrollment, again, we've mentioned, we've experienced a steady increase. We opened the school with 831 students in this building, which was originally projected as 811 in the building. As mentioned, it's a very popular place to move to, Woodbridge and Beecher Road School. We've had three successful open houses, which you'll hear about a little bit later in the Principal's Report. And as mentioned already, we thanked the PTO for the great ice cream social. Hundreds of families attended that, and it was just a great, great night of weather and camaraderie and school community. I do want to mention that each of the open houses, I did mention to all the parents there that it's very much on our hearts and minds that we're thinking about the people who've been affected in Texas, Florida, and there's a lot of other places that have been affected, certainly, you know. It's frightening to think of all the places that have been impacted by storms. But we are, we've been talking. We're trying to get our students, our student council a little involved in that. We know it's a long haul in terms of helping out people in those areas. So we will be making some concerted efforts to be a caring community and reach out and let parents know as well as to how they can participate in that. So stay tuned. Our ad hoc SRO committee is moving, and we've had several meetings. We've had several informational sessions. We'll hear a little bit more about that later tonight in that agenda item. Also, our new curriculum committee has met once, and we had a great presentation by Mrs. Prisco on all the several curriculum projects. We had several staff members present our curriculum templates. You'll hear a little bit more about that later as well, about our curriculum committee. Our STAR universal screening is alive and well, and it's been going on for the last couple of weeks. And so we're continuing that. That's done throughout the BOA districts. It's a valid and reliable universal screen that complements our assessments. So that's been ongoing. And we just talked, we just heard a little bit from, a little bit from Sandy on thinking differently. And so in that respect, we are thinking differently about the budget. We're thinking differently whenever we can. We're thinking about cost savings and all that. And we are continuing to talk amity about the potential of facilities management sharing. It's certainly not a done deal, but it's something that we're looking at. We're looking at any area that we can try to combine services, if possible, or to think differently and out of the box. So we will continue to keep you informed about that along the way. And also, in regards to other facilities news, we've had some small little items in the building, a couple of leaky valves, an isolated roof leak, and some HVAC controls that needed some attention. So our ESG vendor, who did a lot of the work in the building, has been out to take a look at those, was very responsive on those, and those items are being addressed. Of course, there's a number of things that haven't been redundant here, so I will not go through those. I was approached last week by our transportation owner-operators, and they shared a five-year bus contract proposal. I brought that proposal to the Finance Subcommittee that evening. That was last Monday, and we did discuss it a little bit. Discussions will continue to take place in the future for meetings regarding our bus contract, which is up for either renewal or whatever action the Board decides to take on that. And last but not least, we have a couple of great events going on. You already heard about the Halloween Hoot on October 21st. And also, Truck or Treat is coming. The Woodbridge Fire Department holds their annual Truck or Treat on October 31st, Halloween night, from 5 to 8. So I hope you'll all be out for that. It's amazing how many people show up for those two wonderful events. I do want to mention that I brought to the Board of Finance, or Board of Selectmen, last Wednesday night when I went for my monthly meeting, my monthly opportunity to talk to them. I did tell them about a lot of the great things going on at Beecher Road School. I also did, in a sober way, told them about the deficit that we're running right now between our unanticipated health insurance, as well as unanticipated special education expenditures, around $350,000 of deficit. So that was communicated to them as well. And so they certainly heard that and understand that a little bit better. And as of tonight, we, as far as we know, there is still no state budget for us to hang our hat on, so we hope that that gets resolved soon. That's it on my report.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Bob on any of the items that he went over? Okay. I always forget this. It's Gina's. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. So not to repeat too many of the things, I do want to extend a thank you. We did have a large, large number of people at our ice cream social, the first big event of the year from the PTO. Lots of volunteers, but you'll hear me mention a few times tonight, talk about building community. And that is our first go at building community, and it's a very large Beecher community that night. So thank you to everybody who attends, and we appreciate all of the work that goes into it. So, and the staff, and former Beecher students, and maybe their volunteers and helps to scoop. So it's a great night, and it really kicks off our year. It's a nice tradition. As Bob said, we've had a large number of parents and a lot of new families at our open houses over the last few weeks. So we had three open houses. And I'll highlight one component. So our upper grades, fifth and sixth grade, so they've heard, the parents have come, and they've heard the kind of spiel in the cafeteria sometimes for the third time, you know, by the time the fifth and sixth grade one happens. But we do thank the parents for joining us, especially as the students get older, they still need you. Our fifth grader teachers did something a little different this year. All of the fifth grade parents gathered in our rotunda, and the beginning of the open house was done as a fifth grade community. And that's where they started to build their fifth grade grade level community. There was a little bit of a responsive classroom activity to get to know somebody new, maybe, and an example of a greeting. They talked about their program, and they shared information about this year's initiative, the project-based learning. So I received an awful lot of positive feedback. And in talking to the team leaders, some other teams may want to try this going forward. I believe that fifth grade is already called dibs on the rotunda for space, but, so it was a very positive response. And then, after the initial portion, they got to, parents got to go into the classrooms and see all the work and see, you know, if there was a letter written there or something special, or leave a note for their child, whatever it was. So I want to thank the fifth grade for that initiative and taking that idea, and it really was very positive. So speaking of building community, I talked about the ice cream social. We had a smaller community, much smaller. Our kindergarten social was this past Friday night. And so it is a great place for new families and returning Beecher families to get together, adults, you know, setting up, you know, Johnny wants to come to your house, or we want him to come to our house, and lots of playdates happening. But there's a craft that's done, there's some dinner served, and for the adults as well, for the children this time. And then there's some organized events and stations in the north gym. They come back, and then they have an ice cream treat, and then off they go. But it was well-attended. I want to thank Amy Netchum, who was the PTO kind of lead person for this event, and she had a host of volunteers with her. So again, we can't do these things without the support of the PTO. I was there handing out pizza, and there were many, many children and new families that I got to talk to, as well as returning families. As Bob said, we have had a very successful opening these first few weeks. And when children first return to Beecher or start at Beecher, the first few weeks takes on a different look. They are building their classroom communities, not just in our primary grades, but in the intermediate grades as well. They are organizing themselves and creating their own systems and structures in the upper grades, while the adult teachers are kind of guiding that more so in the primary grades. They are also helping to build what their classroom community rules are and what makes sense for them to function as a community. So the first few weeks are spent spending a little more time doing that. We call it as proactive, it's part of responsive classroom. And so as children learn those routines and procedures, it becomes just a fabric of that classroom for the remainder of the year. And I have to say, it does pay off. When students know what the expectation is ahead of time, they know what the practice is. So certainly, we thank the teachers for kind of continuing that and building those communities right in the beginning. Bob did mention also our universal screen. And so we spent last week, the students take their assessment, it's computer adaptive. It is done on the iPads for the most part. We set a small group using our computers in here, or in the tech center. And in grades one through six, it's done in the fall, the winter, and the spring. Kindergarten does not do this in the fall. They don't start theirs until winter. And it takes approximately 20 to 30 minutes, although if students do need some extended time, it is granted based on a student's need, if that's necessary, or directions can be read to a student if that's something that they need as well. And as Bob said, this is also Orange, Stephanie, Woodbridge, and Ebony. We all utilize the same universal screen. A good way to think about what a universal screen is, it's like a temperature check. So the same types of questions may not be, or same standards may not be addressed each time. That's why it's just called a screen. And then our school-wide data team takes a look at those results. And then our school-wide data team takes a look at those results and makes sure that it matches the other internal assessments that we do. So we will be meeting next week with our data team to take a look at those results and, you know, start looking at the students and what the needs are. Again, it's only one data point though, so please do keep that in mind. I think that is it for me. Any questions?
I just have a question. I know in the past you've said that the STAR assessment lines up pretty well. So like when you look at those results and then you look at the other things where you may have identified a child who has a particular need or a particular skill, that that lines up pretty well. You're still seeing that, because we've been doing it just a couple of years.
Just a few years. Overall, it does. We do have some outliers. So one thing that we have the opportunity to do in the student's diagnostic report, we can see how long a child spends on the assessment. And that actually, in our second, I think it was in our second year, a team kind of looked at that, and that was when we were really talking about perseverance, you know, because it can be something that you can kind of click through quickly. So we look at time on test or time on task. But for the most part, it has been a good predictor and matched up with our other data points. That's one of the reasons for the school-wide data team. So when you look at all those points across, all those assessments across a student and you see an outlier, you know, you then go deeper. Did the student spend, you know, three and a half minutes on it, or did they spend 20 minutes taking this assessment? That's the one thing that we look at. Is that answered?
Yeah, thank you. Anything else for me? Anybody have any questions for Gina? Okay, thank you very much.
I know the last meeting we spent a few minutes on enrollment, I'll just spend a couple moments more, what you have in your packet. Now that we're into school, the last time we were here, things were changing by the minute. But what you see today is a, in the building, enrollment of 831. We projected 811 in the building last year when our projections were being made. And so remembering that our guidelines for enrollment are for class sizes between 17 and 19 for K through 3, and 19 to 21 for grades 4 through 6, you'll notice that all of our second grade classes are above our guideline by one or two kids, mostly by two, one by one. Grade 3 are all above by one student or one in class with two. We have three fourth grades who are above by one, and our sixth grade classes are all above by either one or one class by two. So one or two above is certainly reasonable, but it's just something to point out, and it just shows the unexpected, unanticipated enrollment growth. We know we're a growing district in terms of enrollment, we weren't planning on that many. But I think we're in safe, we're in safe numbers right now. We're not three or four or five above in a class size. That would be certainly a different story. We'll be monitoring this during the course of the year. Certainly, we may have some more move-ins. I think Beecher typically and historically has had move-ins along the way. It would not be surprising to see our 831 at the end of the year ended in the 840 range or similar. So just wanted to let you folks know about that.
Anybody have any questions?
In the four weeks since the class size has been at this point, have you heard any feedback from teachers with oversized classrooms, two, two above, two, you know, one or two plus? Has it been more difficult to manage, or is it manageable?
So we've had a couple of conversations, there's been a couple of teachers with the conversations, and I think it's just because they're pretty much expecting, they kind of know what the number is, sort of like what the range is, and it's above the range, and so they let us know that. So I don't mean to be flippant about it, but you know, we say, well, you know, we think it's within a workable range. So we've had a few conversations about that. Gina, I don't know if I'm capturing that.
You are. There has been a few conversations, it's a number they've been accustomed to, and now we are up a little bit. Has anybody said, I can't, I can't do this?
Right.
No, because our teachers are professional about it and will do whatever it takes. And I think that's where, kind of where they are right now, is they know the number's a little bit higher, and they're working with that. It's added a little bit, but they're working with it.
Has there been any sense that teachers felt that they were not able to meet their own expectations in the classroom? Have any teachers said, I don't feel that I can meet my own expectations for teaching the students? I know the policy committee is about to address this class size, and there's a budget issue, so I raised some of the variables to see if we can have a little bit more insight as far as what direction we might need to go in if we need to.
So I can't say that anybody has said to me, and they may not, saying, I can't do my, I can't do my job, I can't do what I want to do. So I can't, no one has said that to me.
No one's raving.
Yes.
I think there's probably a little bit of a, and I think, you know, this is one of the benefits of this school, this district, has been a real high priority on keeping really good class sizes up in range, you know, that's on the lower end, if I was to say, you know, comparatively to other districts. So I think, you know, while people may not be used to one or two above their normal number, I think they probably, you know, like Gina said, they're professional, and we haven't, you know, they pointed out, but I think, you know, time goes on and we make it work.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. All right. So I think we are up to the technology update. Mr. Crawford.
I'll just mention, I just want to say thanks to James for putting this presentation together. He's done a great job of like capturing it. And remember, this plan will be more about our resources, not as much about, really will be about the teaching of technology, and the curriculum of technology is going to be about what our vision was, so to speak, for one-to-one, and where we've come through the years, and where we are now, and how we're trying to replace that equipment. So thank you, James, for putting this together.
And just so people realize, the discussion about technology and curriculum, that we're going to have in the curriculum committee. So we're not ignoring that, this is just more for budget. We're not ignoring the wonderful work you do, James.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is James Crawford. I am the district technology coordinator. So as Mr. Gilbert said, I'm just going to give a broad overview of kind of where we are with technology here at Beecher. I'm going to give you a little bit of the background for the new members, kind of how we got to our point here with technology. So technology plans at Beecher Road School for the past two and a half decades have focused on the district leveraging the power of technology to enhance creativity, learning, and productivity. Balanced use of technology has provided many outcomes and continuously growing toolkit for both students and faculty, while students and teachers alike learn to make personal choices from traditional and digital tools. So the last three tech plans have kind of led us with these three initiatives. The first one was Mobile Computing for Faculty Initiative. And this was the initiative that brought the laptops into the hands of every teacher, giving them access to resources, student data, and communication both during school and at home. The next initiative was the Smartboard Initiative, and that brought the interactive digital resources and tools in front of each classroom for focus instruction. The last one was the Mobile Technology for Students Initiative, and that's one that placed iPads in the hands of all students in the classroom, bringing access to digital resources and tools to the places and times when needed most, instead of providing access only at scheduled times in the computer lab. So Mr. Gilbert asked me, he said, okay, what is a research study? So research for one-to-one devices with students. I found a couple of kind of interesting studies, one being More Engaged Learners. This is a four-year study of 5,000 middle school students, and it says that in this school, that they found that these students were more engaged in the immersion programs, and they were less likely to have discipline problems than students in schools without mobile devices. The next one was Better Technology Skills. And this was saying that schools with student one-to-one immersion programs had technology skills improved so much that after three years of being in the immersion program, low-income students in those programs displayed the same level of technology skills as of wealthier students. And cost efficiencies, and I think this is something that we could all recognize, one-to-one programs have reduced costs for textbooks, paper, assignments, paperwork. And it also says, in a reduction of disciplinary actions for students. But the main thing here is, what does Beecher say? So what I created, I surveyed a few teachers in the building in our one-to-one programs and created a Word cloud. So for those of you who don't know Word clouds, the bigger the word is, the more often it's said. And the biggest word here is writing. So what teachers said, that no matter what grade, whether it be second grade or sixth grade, the impact of the one-to-one iPads in the classroom has impacted writing the most. Teachers go on to say things that writing has become easier during the drafting period for students, because students are writing their first draft, and instead of spending more time on that initial draft to revise it, they can go back and make their quick edits. So they're spending more time and making more creative writing, because they can spend more time working on their final piece. Writing conferences are so much easier, teachers said, because they're never taking the work away from the students. Teachers are able to conference with students, provide notes and feedback while looking at the students' work, without them ever having to hand in the draft. So teachers are looking after hours, after school, at the students' work, because they can see it in real time, and students can get feedback kind of immediately. They never have to hand in the paper, wait for a day or two for it to come back and get it. And those conferences, I know the teachers have also been great, because teachers can monitor multiple students at one time and look and see how the writing has progressed, and kind of target the areas and work with students, make sure those writing conferences really are beneficial for everyone. Let's see if I got all my notes here. One other piece was digital text and research articles are a lot more accessible via the iPads instead of the photocopying of the access of articles. So teachers are able to differentiate and get the articles and the resources to the students that need them, really at the time of need. So where is technology? And I know we have some new members of the board here, but I just wanted to review where we have pieces of technology. So desktop computers, we have iMac computers. The main teaching spaces for those are the library and the technology center, and we also have staff workspaces throughout the building with desktop computers. There are a few desktop computers in classrooms still, but the number of those has been decreasing rapidly since we've been introducing mobile devices. We have iPads one-to-one in grades two through six, and we have centers of iPads in K and one. Teachers in the one-to-one grades also have iPads. And there are laptops, as I said earlier, for all the teachers in the district. Classrooms are also outfitted with smartboards and document cameras, and that's pretty much in every learning space. I think the south gym and the cafeteria are one of the few places that don't have some sort of projection system.
The south gym has a smartboard?
Yeah, so the north gym has a projection system. It does not have a smartboard. Yes, the projector's caged in the north gym, so. So we are very fortunate in those, for those areas of technology. Replacement cycles, and I know this was kind of the leading question that brought me here tonight. There has been kind of a change in how we've replaced desktop computers. Before the adoption of one-to-one, we were replacing desktop computers on a five-year cycle. And since moving to one-to-one, we actually have not replaced any desktop computers. Mobile devices, it gets a little trickier. So the iPad was actually only introduced in April of 2010, so the iPad hasn't been around that long. And what we found in the meantime is that there are two limitations to mobile devices, one being hardware, being the actual battery life and the durability of the device, and the other being software limitations. And what we've been noticing now is that some of our devices, though the battery life may be in good condition and good health, is that the software is actually limiting. So the new iOS 11 is coming out tomorrow, and that's actually going to not be able to be applied to a number of our devices, because the hardware is actually too old, and Apple has declared it older hardware. So we're running into that kind of situation now, where we've been trying to hold on to mobile devices as long as we can, but we're facing some limitations that we can try to handle, which is hardware, taking better care of our devices, but the software limitations are something that's out of our control. Infrastructure, we've spent a number of time during the construction to update our actual cabling and wiring infrastructure, so we're very up to date with that. And this year, we are finalizing this fall the faculty laptop updates to replace those. And those are the ones that are five to six years old, that will be, we'll be finishing the replacement of this fall. So replacement cycles, and just to give another view of this, on the graph here, the blue icons, the blue bars, are the desktop computers, and the red are the iPads. So this is another way to show you, the last time we purchased desktop computers was during the 2010, 2011 school year, and ever since then, we've been purchasing iPads. We haven't purchased both desktops and iPads in the same year. You'll also notice at this point, the 2017, 18 school year, there are no planned purchases as of this year because the budget was cut for those. One of the things I also want to kind of put out there is that when we started in 2010, 2011, we had over 300 desktop computers in the school. We're now down to about 164, and I'm seeing that number continue to decline as teachers are saying that we don't want desktop computers in the classroom, we're okay with having the mobile devices. So as our one-to-one initiative wrapped up, or completed, the grades two through six last year, that's when I've seen the number of desktop computers in the classroom decline. So as Mr. Gilbert said, what do we plan for? In the last initiative, we were planning to provide one-to-one devices in grades two through six by the 2016, 17 school year, and provide iPad centers in kindergarten and first grade. And we've completed that. Last year, we've got all the grades that we were planning to, and we have our centers in kindergarten and first. So the next step now, and this is what has started this year, by some pre-purchasing of iPads in the last school year, we've started the five-year replacement cycle of iPads. We've found at this point that, as I said, the software limitations are preventing us from using iPads past the five years. If Apple continues the trend they have, so this year, we've started to initiate and go through and replace some of our older iPads and continue that. So what does a five-year replacement cycle look like? Now, this is the one that always catches people a little off-guard, because the easiest way to do a five-year replacement cycle would be put it in the hands of a second grader, let them carry it through through sixth grade, and we don't have to do any changeouts, they just get the same iPad as they go through. But when we look at it a little bit deeper, we notice that that second grader would have a brand-new iPad in second grade, but then would have a five-year-old iPad in sixth grade, or the upper grades have an older iPad, where they're doing the most amount of work, most amount of writing. So we came up with a plan that gets a new iPad in the hand of a fourth grader, it gets the iPad with the most life, the most functionality for four, five, and six, and then we can rotate that iPad back to second and third grade, so that we can make sure that we have sixth graders with up-to-date current apps, current iPad, and we're not faced with any issues with that. So far, this has been the cycle that we've attempted and we're doing right now, is going to be swapping out the fourth grade in the coming month. So this will be the first attempt at this replacement cycle. What I'm going to start proposing is a 25 iMac desktops replaced a year starting next year, and hoping that we can do a six-year replacement cycle of desktop computers. As I said earlier, some of our desktop computers are between eight and 10 years old now, and by the time that we can get this whole cycle through, I think our oldest ones will no longer be supported.
So I have a question. So the IMACs are what we use in the library and tech. And so, and those are used pretty much, because we do tech classes for, through second or through?
Through fourth grade.
Through fourth. Okay, all right. And those are what we want to continue to use for tech classes?
Yes, it's the tech classes, library classes. There's other projects and things that fifth and sixth graders come up here for, and there's still some programs, like our typing program that we start in second grade, that are better done on a full-size keyboard with a full-size screen to be done on a desktop computer rather than an iPad screen.
And this would be the first time we're replacing the IMACs?
So since the 2010, 2011 school year, we have now bought a desktop computer.
Thank you.
So it comes down to numbers. So when looking at all this, it boils down to, looking at student computing, this would be about $62,000 at current pricing, $36,000 for an iPad replacement cycle, and the iPads, we're looking at about 110, 120 iPads, which would be one grade level. The desktop computer replacement, which is about 25 computers, it would be 25 computers, which is about $26,000. Faculty mobile computing, we won't be looking at replacing any mobile computers, and we said we just, we'll be finishing that this fall, we'll be looking at replacing faculty iPads. Office computers, we are up to date, so I am proposing no replacements for the coming year. And then team replacement of projectors and document cameras. They're something that has become a real crutch to a lot of teachers, having a document camera where they can put books and work right under in the classroom. So that totals out to $75,000. And the capital improvements, we're still doing some wiring upgrades to a few places to put our different wireless access points, upgrading some of the switching, which is our internal network, and then adding additional access points to areas of heavy need with our iPads. The big-ticket item is a new Windows Server, which The big-ticket item is a new Windows Server, which directly impacts the business in district offices, and that is a $32,000 virtual server system. So the capital budget request would be at $46,000. That's it, no questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
So we take the S-Back, the STAR, and the CMTs all on computers now?
All on iPads.
All on iPads. And that is, I know initially, we gave kids a choice of what to take it on, and pretty much the kid's choice is the iPad, right? Okay, so we've just gone completely iPad. We don't, I mean, unless there's special requirements, we don't use anything else?
Correct. The only time that we've had a few--
We have a small group that use the desktops for the STAR assessment.
For STAR assessment, so meaning here because of the time crunch and when STAR needs to take place, deploying of all the iPads and getting them in the hands of children after we've done acceptable use box and those things.
And by request of the team.
By the team, that there are some teachers who have taken the first STAR on the desktop computers, but otherwise it's bad.
Everybody else is.
iPad.
Thank you very much for this, and I liked the, some of the research that you provided, so I really appreciate it. You didn't say anything negative, though, and I caught some words, they're smaller, but I was wondering if you could expound a little bit about the words limited, restrictions, trying, frustration, issues that came up from the teachers, because I don't think, it's great to applaud the wonderful aspects of technology, but there is criticism that sometimes it's hampering.
So one of the ones that's been, the biggest criticism has been the new student data privacy law that came into effect last year and the limitations that teachers have experienced because of that law and where we can put student data. So that has been tough for teachers and has been tough for the district to kind of cope with. That law restricts where we can upload student names, information, what kind of free apps we can use, if we can use the free apps, what information those apps are, you know, trying to use to be free, so trying to restrict that. So that has been difficult for other people. The word limited has come up in the past, and if I look at the actual full responses, one of the teachers was talking about the limited times that they could get to the computer labs prior to having one-to-one. So there's limited availability of computer labs to try to get to those places to do projects, so that was limiting the times and the types of projects that teachers would do using technology because they'd have to schedule one project and work around how many teachers were using a computer lab and what times were open.
Frustration was about privacy?
So frustration was about privacy. I'm seeing if I can just pull out the direct quote from where that one was. I'd have to get back to that one.
There was something that stood out, those words were smaller.
Yeah, so most of the smaller words were one-time occurrence in the work lab.
Does anybody else have any questions for James? So the fact that we don't have anything in the 17-18, we did last year, so we got ourselves--
Yeah, we pre-purchased about 160 iPads. And when I was talking about that software limitation versus hardware, when Rick Wood is here and he's purchasing iPads, he purchased a lot of one specific generation of iPads because of discounts, the time, or limitations. So we have 300 iPad fourth generations, and those are the ones that as of tomorrow will no longer be able to be updated. So I have 160 of them that I'm hoping to recycle out, but as Mr. Gilbert said, with the enrollment, I may have to not recycle out as many as I was hoping for. So the number going forward, it's about 22% of our iPads as of tomorrow after recycling that would be no longer being up to date.
And so the numbers you've given us for 18-19 keep us current?
Would keep us current.
Because even though this year says zero, it is, it's been accounted for to the degree that we could from last year's funding? Okay, all right.
I would just remind the board, and I think, you know, this, I think Margaret's sort of alluded to it, but you know, in the cuts that we made last year, we totally eliminated the line item for technology replacement equipment, which was put back into the operating budget last year, and previous years it had been in the capital budget for the town. So it's not like we have a line item that's, let's say, $50,000, which we're going to increase by a few dollars, or $100,000, decrease by a few. We don't have, we don't have a line item for technology in our current operating budget. So it's an add-on to our budget for next year. It's an important add-on, we should say that.
Okay, is there any other questions for Mr. Crawford? No? Okay, thank you, Mr. Crawford. So are we going right to S-Back?
Right.
Okay, so we won't move, right?
I want to thank our assistant, Lisa Sherman, for putting this presentation together, and she did last year as well, bringing to us really a sort of 30,000-foot view, to some degree, maybe a little deeper in terms of our Smarter Balance results from last year, that was administered last spring, and also the CMT grade-five science results that were given, that were assessed last spring as well for our fifth graders. There's a lot of information here. I will just say, if you're a board member who's been here last year and maybe the year before, you're going to see a little bit of repeat information. We wanted to make sure that everybody, especially new board members, had some of the information here, so we're going to give you a couple of examples, you know, what the actual assessment, what's the purpose, and you know, just some examples of what the test looks like. We'll try to go through that fairly briefly, give you some background information, and then, you know, move towards the actual results themselves. So thank you. If you've seen this before, thank you for your patience. If you see it one more time, maybe you can actually get the presentation next year. How's that?
This might like--
Any takers?
Okay, so thank you for allowing me to be here and to share this information with you. As Bob said, this was the, these results are from the administration that occurred last spring, so you know that's what you're looking at for the Smarter Balance and the CMT grade five. So the Smarter Balance assessment, as I'm sure you already know, is a global measure of student learning. It is administered annually to our students in grades three through six. It's aligned to the Common Core state standards, as is our current curriculum. And it's also important to note that there's a computer adaptive test, which basically means that the test changes depending on the answers that a student gives. So that no one test is exactly the same as another one, essentially. Also, there is one math performance task, which is sort of a more open-ended, challenging word problem. There is no longer an ELA performance task, that was eliminated a couple of years ago. So there are two tests that the students take through SBAs. The first one is an English Language Arts one, and there's four areas tested within that content area, reading, writing, listening, and research inquiry. And I'm just going to give you a minute to sort of read a little bit of information about that instead of reading that to you.
Can I ask a different question? So I know S-Backs, we've taken on computers, and CMTs now are also taken and fall online?
Yep, everything's online now.
Are they adaptive as well?
The CMT, the science CMTs, no.
No, okay, so everybody takes the same one?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And should we just say that for this year's CMT science, we're still waiting for final word from the state in terms of whether it's going to be the CMT, whether it's going to be the NGSS, the new science standards pilot test?
This is a sample ELA question, and I like to show this because it is a very different type of reading than our students are used to. I mean, for starters, it is presented to the students on a split screen, and there's a number of tools embedded within the system to assist the students. One of them is an arrow right above the text there, so that allows the students to expand it, but that's something new for them. Some questions, like number 10, the students are required to click within that paragraph, which is new for them, obviously. Some questions, like number 11, they have to click within that open box and type their response. And there's a number of things that teachers do to sort of make this a little bit more familiar to students. For one thing is that they do actually display sample questions to the whole class so that they can sort of walk through some of these tools with them. There is a practice test that the students also engage in, and there's also something called the interim assessment blocks. Last year, all students completed one on their own, so they had to go through one shorter assessment around a specific topic independently. So this is the background information on math. Much like language arts, there are four areas that are tested, concepts and procedures, problem-solving, communicating reasoning, and modeling and data analysis. And again, I'll just give you a second to read that. And here is a sample math question. Just like on the English Language Arts ones, there are a number of tools that we encourage the students to become familiar with in the same ways that we do with English Language Arts. Even the little fraction bar at the bottom there that they sometimes have to click in to give an answer, all the operations are up there. This question, they have to type within that box, so just teaching the students to tap on it or click on it in order to type within it, that's some of the work that we do prior So S-Back scores are reported in a few different ways. One way that they are reported is the achievement levels, and when I get to the data, you'll see that I have the achievement levels listed, but I also have the vertical scale scores listed. And the reason that we do that is that the achievement levels are a less precise measure. So for example, a student who is in grade three who scores at level one, which is saying does not meet the standard, in English Language Arts, the scale, the vertical scale score range for grade three, level one, is 2,114 to 2,366. So every child that falls within that range is reported as level one, which obviously is not as precise as if I report that on scale score. So in a minute, you'll see that I reported both ways, the data both ways. And it's also important to note that the range is not the same at every level, the spread between the lowest and the highest is not the exact same at every single level for every single grade across content areas. So another example would be math. In grade three, level four, that range is 2,501 to 2,621. So that means a student in grade three could achieve a 2,501 and still be a level four, or you could achieve a 2,621 and be a level four. It's just less precise. So here are our results.
I have a quick question. Parents haven't gotten them yet, right?
No, nope, they actually just arrived.
Oh, that big box?
Yeah, that big box. The individual student reports arrived like Friday afternoon at like 2:30 or something. So we just got them, so we were just talking today about getting those mailed out.
Okay.
Yeah, so no, no one has gotten them yet. No parents have gotten them yet. So these are our ELA results, and you'll notice that I color-coordinated, so if you look diagonally across all the orange, that is a cohort, so that are, those were our third-grade students in 2014-2015. They were fourth graders in 2015-2016, and then they were fifth graders last year, so they are our current sixth graders, so that orange is sort of the cohort. It's also important to note that it's not a matched cohort. That means that the students have moved in, there are students that have moved in and out, so it's not the exact same students across the way. If we have students who have left or students who have come in, they're all bumped into that group, okay? So just to point out a little bit, so the vertical scale scores are also the same color coding. So just to point out that the percentage, as I was saying, if you look, it doesn't look like an increase, but then if you look at our scale scores, you'll notice that there is an increase both within the cohorts going diagonally, and if you look also like the 2016-2017, if you look from grade three to grade four to grade five to grade six, there's also an increase vertically. It's also important to note that overall across the state, there was a decrease in the ELA scores, so statewide, that was a trend.
Is there thinking about why that was true, that everybody dropped, or not everybody, but in general, changes in the test, is it changes in the standards, changes, it can't be changes in the curriculum if it happened to everybody.
So in our, even in our, you'll hear that we reached out to talk about some of our scores to the State Department, and there is not any response at this time as to why that happened. So I don't know if there'll be one coming forward in the future, but right now, no.
So here are our math results. And once again, you'll notice that the vertical scale scores, again, if you look across the cohorts, they are growing. So we were hoping that the trend in fifth grade, the percent scoring at level three and above trend, you'll notice that it went from 44.1 to 71.9%, and then it went to 55.2. So obviously, we were hoping that the increased trend would continue, but it did not, and we consider that to be a bit of an outlier, and as Ms. Crisco just said, that we did actually reach out to the state to sort of verify the results for us, and what they suggested is that we look at the students that make up that cohort. They said at first glance, it did not look like a problem in reporting, but they suggest that what we do is we take some time to sort of look at that cohort. And when I get to next steps, you'll hear some of the thinking that we have around that.
Just going to add, you asked a question, and we went back and looked at some of our internal assessments as well as the STAR because we were surprised at that, that data didn't totally match for us. So it's why we reached out and said, please look at this again, if not, so we have to dig a little bit more into that cohort and say, okay, who are the children at this point? And what do they need?
But again, it's worth noting that the vertical scale scores are continuing to increase even though the percentage meeting level three and above decreased in that area.
That's what that really means, is that students are making growth, but they're not making as much growth as other grade levels or as other students at other grade levels.
Right.
Growth is not as much as we would expect it to be.
So this is where we fall within our DIRD. I couldn't fit it all on one screen, so it's kind of split. So just imagine as if one, starting with Greenwich is kind of below, so this is where we fall within our DIRD. This is the ELA scores, and you'll notice that some of the differential in points, like from Sinsbury to Avon, Sinsbury is 80.3, Avon is 80.2. So some of that differential is literally tenths of a point between one district and And last year, the range, just for point of reference, in ELA, the range was 81.8 at the top and 61.5 at the bottom, with the state coming in at 55.6. So you'll notice the statewide trend is a little bit lower at 44, 54.2. Same chart for math. And again, the differential last year, the highest score was coming in at 76.3, so Trumbull this year is a little bit higher at 77, and the lowest was at 57.9 with the state coming in at 44, so a slight increase in math.
I want you to know that my former colleagues in Granby have not spoken to me about this
This is looking at the overall results just in a different way. You'll see across the top, you have 2015, the DIRD, Artistic Reference Group, and then the state, and you have that for 2015, 2016, 2017, and then ELA and math. And just to note that, it says 188 districts in Connecticut because it does include charter schools and magnet schools and any schools that house outplace students. schools and magnet schools and any schools that house outplace students. So Science CMT. Science C does, Science CMT does measure for science concepts. It's really important to note that the assess, the assessment measures concepts that the students are learning in third grade, and then in fourth grade, and then they actually take the assessment in fifth grade. So it's really testing multiple years' worth of learning. Here is a sample Science CMT question. And this is actually based on experiments that they do, I think, I want to say in fourth grade, but I might be wrong about that. And as we pointed out, Margaret mentioned, it is given online, just like the SPOCs are now. Last year was in first year, they were administered online. So these are our results for the last three years.
And was this a surprise that this year, because I know last year we did, you know, so very well in science, was this a surprise that we went down a little bit, or was this a signal?
Not, not, we didn't expect, based on looking at our data, to perform as high as we had the previous year, so I won't say it was a total surprise. Thought maybe a little bit higher than that.
Okay. And from the perspective of the state, did, did we, like, was there any trend at the state level for science?
Um, I-
And is, is there was for ELA, everybody kind of went down and the man already kind of went up?
I don't know if I have, yeah.
I didn't hear of any-
I didn't hear of that.
We didn't hear anything, no, nothing during the night.
I didn't hear any of that.
So this is us.
Yeah, I think if you look through, if I remember the chart that Karen Stevenger gave me when I first came here last year, she sort of gave me the chart of the history of the testing, it's, you know, it's all over the place.
And it's also tricky-
To some degree, it's, you know, it's, it's a different class every year, so you have a different makeup.
And you can't follow the cohort the way you do with-
Right, because they only do it in what?
They do it fifth grade and then eighth grade.
We don't have them.
And we don't have access to the eighth grade yet.
Oh, yeah.
Right, so it's a little more challenging. So some of the work that we're moving forward with, we are doing some grade level analysis by homeroom. Teachers have requested the data from the students that took the test, as well as the data from the students that are currently in front of them, so we've been providing that information. We are going to continue some professional development. This screen is a little wonky, it looks like they got cut off a little at the bottom there. We are doing some continued professional learning and curriculum development, as you know. We are having our ACES math consultant work with grades two, three, and five. I know that you all know that, but that work is going to continue. We are doing some coaching work with grades two and grade six in math. We're going to continue to give students appropriate exposure and practice, the tools necessary to demonstrate their knowledge. Columbia consultant will be working with all grade levels again. And one of the other things that we are going to begin working on also is progress monitoring using STAR. And one of the things that we wanted to sort of really look at closely, using a schoolwide data team, was how our STAR universal screen is correlating to our SPOC results, and sort of really closely monitoring all students, but especially those students in grade six, which is where that cohort trend sort of went down a little bit. And in future reporting, we will be able to access some of the target results, which will show us the percentage of students that are meeting their own growth targets. So that will be released, actually, we just got access, just tonight, actually, I was just logging in, just tonight, I got access to that information. So we're going to be really looking closely at student growth targets and how they are doing at achieving their own growth targets.
Can I just add to that?
Sure.
Each student is assigned, based on where they started, what the expected growth is, and they're measured both against themselves, and then they're also measured against expected performance at that level. So there'll be two things for us to look at. Are they growing based on where they're expected, and how are they growing against what is considered proficient?
Right.
So we'll be able to look at that.
And even though, I mean, I know we're using spreadsheets, we don't have a data tool, the way that you like inform or whatever we use to use. So we're doing this, this is accessible and usable, and the data is available to the teachers in a way, in a way that, you know, that they can get to the details of this.
The SPOC data or our internal data?
I guess both.
So the SPOC data was shared out on, on, on an Excel sheet, because that's how it's given to us by the state when we download it. And so that allows them, it doesn't, it doesn't give them as much information as we would like it to, but it does give them sort of overall level four, three, two, one, and then it does give them the claim and how each child scored within each claim. So speaking and listening claim, reading claim, writing claim, but it just, again, does a four, three, two, or one. So that's, it doesn't dig as deep as we would like.
So you may be thinking how we used to dig into CMT scores?
Right.
This reporting system does not allow us to go there.
As much. But then we also have an internal schoolwide data team, and that looks at, oh, there it is, STAR, that looks at STAR data, that looks at some of the universal screens that we, some of the assessments that we do throughout the year, such as our teacher's college reading assessments, and all of that is in one place, that teachers have access to last year's students, and they will be putting in this year's student data as they go. And so when we talk about our schoolwide data team, that's the data that we're going to be looking at, more of our internal data that we collect throughout the year.
Do we have any intuitive feel for the changes in the cohort? I know, I think at one time, we actually did, although you get down to kind of a small number, we actually did take the actual kids who were in each of those grades consistently, and we took out the kids-
The matched, the matched.
Yeah, the matched cohort. And we actually said, you know, can we see something, or can we intuitively feel that there's some explanation for some of this, based on the changes in the cohort, and then looking at the matched cohort? I don't know if that's worth doing, or if you, if the teachers are looking at it individually, and so really, that's just an exercise. I'm just kind of curious.
Right.
I think at one time, we did.
With the new EdSecare site-
Yep.
We can take that matched, we can probably dig into it. We were not able to do that before. This is brand new. Bob and I were just at a-
Only about a week ago.
Right, we were at a conference on Tuesday, on Tuesday, and so we were told that we could, you know, two people in the district can look at it, just two, and so that's Lisa and I. And then the site, of course, wasn't working, and so we got a message tonight that it is working. So it's brand new.
And, and I'm not even suggesting that. I'm just saying, you know, like, if you, you know, if you look at it and you go, well, you know, we know we had, you know, like, a huge turnover in fifth grade, we had a lot of additions, you know, two years ago that came in or whatever, that there is some, you know, some reason to think that, that the change in the cohort had an effect on the change in the, the growth.
Yeah. I think it's good to look at all of the factors that contribute overall to a score. And that is one of them.
Yeah, I have a really good question. STAR is just ELA and math?
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And no writing, there's no writing-
There's no writing.
Well, there might be questions about, it's reading and math, so there's no writing component to it.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's pretty much multiple choice.
Okay. Did anybody have any questions for Lisa or Gina? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa. All right. So we have gotten to the ad hoc SRO committee. You guys in your pocket had the minutes from the last two meetings. Where we're at right now is, the survey questions have kind of been developed, they're not tweaked yet, and we don't have the information yet that we want to include as background, but we kind of have a pretty good feel for what we want the survey questions to be. I think there's six of them, maybe, seven, something like that. And then we're meeting again on the 25th at 6:15, and there's, that's a parent forum. So we tried to get feedback from parents, or at least tried to get some information of, you know, what information would be helpful, what kinds of questions do you have? We had fairly, fairly limited response at the open houses, and we're hoping that having a completely separate session, you know, we might get some more parents to attend, but we certainly had parents with, you know, lots of thoughts on, you know, what we need to do and how we need to do it at the forum, so that was good. So are there any questions, kind of about where we are with SRO or where we're going? I think there's actually, no? I think there's actually six questions. That we came up with. So everybody, if you're interested, you know, we're having another, these are all public meetings, we've had, you know, some additional people come to the meetings. The next one's on the 25th of September at 6:30, that's the parent forum, and then at 7:15, we're going to stay until we finish the survey. And then the survey will go out to all parents and faculty. Okay?
Great.
Is it not, is it faculty or staff?
Both.
What did, uh-oh, staff. Yeah, staff.
Uh-oh.
I should say staff.
All parents and all staff.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Not just faculty.
Not just faculty, right, right. Okay. Okay. All right.
Curriculum committee, Lynn?
Yes, as Bob mentioned, the curriculum committee met on September 7, where we had some great presentations on the summer curriculum work. Gina provided some updates on some English language work that was done in grades one and two. Karen Steviger was there and gave a great presentation on the next generation of science standards, and shared at that meeting a template that has been developed to provide consistency across the grade levels and to also provide differentiation across content areas, so they're working on that. I thought it was amazing what was provided in this particular unit of study. So a really incredible amount of work that went into that. And then Maureen Crowick and Jeanne Malo and Mrs. Sherman did the same for math, and we saw their template that they're using for the math work, and they worked with the ACES consultant. So again, a huge amount of work that's being done in those two curriculum areas. Mrs. Prisco also outlined the project-based learning for grade five, the summer work that was done with that. And there was also summer work done in library media, so scope and sequence was developed.
ELA?
ELA, grade two and grade one.
ELA, I said at the beginning, I thought, sorry. Phonics and spelling.
Sorry, I thought I meant to say-
Grades one and two. And so our next meeting is scheduled for October 5. It's going to have a presentation on world language. So as yet, I've not received anything except from Margaret. We've received what she'd like to see in that, if there's anything that any board member wants in a presentation. I think tonight is the deadline. This is it. So that the world language teachers can create their presentation to meet whatever needs we're looking for. And also, a question came up about responsive classroom, and so we're going to add that to our calendar for discussion item, which will be after our December meeting at some point.
And technology is going to go on the-
Technology will go on that as well. And just so that you can think ahead, November 9 is, we're going to look at enrichment opportunities. We've invited Kathy Salinardi from Extended Day, and some of the teachers that are involved in some of the after-school enrichment opportunities that have existed in the past. So if there's anything you want to hear about that, please either let Bob know or me know, and I'll pass that on to those people. Thanks.
Any questions for Lynn?
Facilities.
Tom?
We met last week on the Thursday the 14th, and at the meeting, we discussed projects that were completed last year, which included, not limited to, the, the large project was the building upgrades and maintenance project, was closed out and for which reconciling processes started for the energy efficiencies upgrade. South Assembly was refurbished, the line painting was done, labs were painted, south electrical panel replaced, numerous cabinet replacements. And following that, we began to look forward toward this year, given that we're looking at a rather difficult budget process moving forward, if any. We started looking at some of the major things that we're going to have to bear in mind, such as the north parking lot repaving, which includes the emergency access road around the school. And we also began to review the site work plan, going with the Fussin-O'Gill report that was generated several years ago, and for which we discussed at some point in the near future, having a tour of the grounds to see what exactly was entailed therein. And also looked at the existing oil tank that's in the ground, and that appears to be in good shape, and should, we should be good with that till 2022. Reviewed the kindergarten playground, and the issue with some roots and lighting therein, and then discussed the school beautification committee, the walkthrough that will be coming up with that. And then we identified having future meetings for facilities on third Monday each month just before the regular board meeting at 6 o'clock.
And are we going to have those here in the library, or are we going down a couple over?
We hadn't really discussed.
Okay. All right, so you'll let us know when. All right, did anybody have any questions for Tom? Capital budget obviously comes up before the operating budget, so the, you know, some of the items that you mentioned are part of, going to be part of our capital budget plus. Okay. Finance, Steve's not here, I think Sandy went over some things. You all had the reports, so you can see where we're at. We're, we're in red by quite a bit, and things will change every month, so you'll be part of that while we're looking at next year's budget. Policy.
Yes, there'll be three policy meetings this fall. The first will be tomorrow evening at 5:30. Please come if you, if you can make it. And then there are subsequent meetings, October 10th and November 21st. In addition to the items which Marcia has graciously placed on the website, there are two policies, the naming of facilities, you may remember this from the memorial request from last year, as well as a discussion about the class size guidelines. Also in a meeting with Bob, we also, if you, if you are curious, on the CAVE website, there's actually all of our policies listed. That's a good place to find it. But in addition to our policies, all the other school policies are there as well. As a comparison, we did notice that we haven't revisited many of those policies, so we may do that as an incremental improvement on our own policies, and looking at them is a good discipline every couple of years. So we look forward to anyone who can join us tomorrow evening at 5:30.
And Bob, I think we're doing that in your area?
Yes, right down in the district office, yes.
The October 10th and November 21st?
Yes.
For those at 5:30 as well? Okay. Anybody have any questions for Nancy?
Megan.
So first order of business is just reviewing what trainings are coming up, and one that I know we've talked about previously is the CAVE CAPS convention. Just wanted to put it out there, if anyone, nobody has, I don't think, signed up for that, but if you are interested, please do it now, as the price will continue to go There are some other trainings coming up. There's a legal issues training, October 17. There's a workshop designed for superintendent, secretary, administrative assistance, and executive assistance coming up, but I don't know if that's necessary, since I think we have an expert on hand.
I think Marcia should just be running all of us.
Yeah.
She does. She just does it very subtly, so.
Very much. There's a CAVE delegate assembly, November 16. The, what's the- The, what's the, and there's a new board member orientation and a leadership conference coming up, December 7th. So for old members, leadership conference, for new members, orientation. And there's more information, obviously, through CAVE and all the emails that we've been getting. All right. So my first crack at summarizing all the stuff that we get from CAVE, I'm not sure if folks are reading the stuff that we get, but I know one thing that they send us is policy highlights. So we get those twice a month. And I think we can probably talk about it more in our policy meetings. But one thing, just to raise the awareness, was the Equal Access Act they wanted to raise awareness to, just to be aware of student groups and making sure that students have equal opportunity to have non-curriculum groups, that they're protected to be able to meet within the school. So that's one, that there's more information on if anyone's interested in. There's a lot on that. Another one, which, I don't know, I first didn't think much of, but maybe it is something we'll talk about, is this BYOD or BYOT, which is Bring Your Own Technology. And it's where schools are having, and this was probably implemented in schools that didn't have the money for technology originally. And I don't know if that's something feature wants to think about moving forward, is having students start to bring in their own technology to cut that budget a bit. And there was a whole bunch of policy that they, CAVE has sample policy that we could implement, you know, that we could utilize and try to look at. And there's some examples. Florida, New York, California are already doing this, so. Cave Journal has some interesting articles. I think one thing I wanted to mention too, if folks were still thinking about doing the convention, one of the main speakers is a gentleman, Dan Alcindia-Caralda. And he wrote the book, Undocumented: A Dominican Boy's Odyssey From a Homeless Shelter to the Ivy Beach. So I just don't know if that would entice any interest. Sounds interesting. We're already going, so I'm excited to see that. I'm not sure how much more information you guys want. They always have some interesting things, things about promoting student mental health and attempted suicide, there's an issue in there. Information about grants that CAVE has received to try to promote diversity. There's tips for surviving with your fellow board members. Yeah, that was in September's issue, but anyone wants to look at it. Practical advice for engaging parents in community. I figured just give you some headlines, and then if people are interested, you know, you can go back and read or let me know.
Everybody's getting this material, right? Everybody's getting all the material. Okay, great. All right.
Karen reads it all, too.
Yeah. Ian and Megan go over the clock and discuss it. It's a whole thing.
So, and five tips for effectively marketing your school district, because I don't think we ever probably do that, marketing our school district, so. And then there's no, you know, clear on the budget and whatnot. So, but they do have their advocacy highlights that kind of will give a breakdown of where we are with things, what the grant proposal is and whatnot. So haven't gotten anything new since this weekend, but that, so. That's the rundown of CAVE.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Megan?
Sir.
Okay. I just wanted to say that was great.
Thank you. Wasn't sure, you know, too much, not enough, so.
I think that's, that's good, because it is hard to read every day. ACES, I put some notes in from, I'm the representative now from Woodbridge, the ACES Board. So there's a ton of material about ACES. You know, it really acts very much like this board in terms of, you know, the kinds of things that come before it, approving projects and things like that. The one thing that they mentioned, ACES has a lot of properties. When you look at the assets of ACES, you know, you go, my God, you know, but they, they, you know, they actually own the schools, you know, like the, they need the stuff on Skiff Street. There's a new project, or a project that is, they're looking to start, which involves really replacing the, with the two schools that are currently on Skiff Street and creating new schools for those. So I need to find out more about the actual funding of that project. The expectation is the state will fund 80% of it and ACES will fund 20% of it. I just don't know if I can, you know, kind of go forward with those kinds of assumptions these days. So, so they'll be talking about that next time. And we are up to, did anybody have any questions about ACES, about the notes? Okay. All right. Accountability plan. So we're going to hear about that next, next month. The accountability, not, obviously, we're not getting any results yet from last year.
Oh, so it's just the note of view of what it is?
So we're talking about, like, from the results we got from last year.
Yep.
What have we done? What are we planning on doing? You know, again, I think I said this before, my interest is in chronic absenteeism, physical fitness, and?
Participation rate.
And participation rate. So those are kinds of the areas where?
Those are the concerning areas, if you could say those, use that word. You know, those are the areas that kind of jumped out. Where can we make improvements?
Right. The, yeah, the, we did a great job moving the achievement gap down. So I'm hoping when we get this year's results, we're going to see even more of that, because our achievement gap numbers, and this is again from FY '15 and '16, because we don't have more recent, but, but that was very, very impressive, that movement. And again, the actual scores and the performance, you know, those are our numbers we hear elsewhere. So to me, those are less of what I'm interested in, the accountability plan, than some of the things that we still need to affect, like the absenteeism and the physical fitness, you know, and the participation rates, which, again, for last year, I don't think we know yet whether we made it, but we think we did, right? The participation rate for this, we did? Okay.
No. No. Ask your question again, so.
The participation rate for last year, we didn't make?
Oh, we don't know that, yeah. We won't get that until January, or whenever they release it. Last year was January.
Yeah. So, so that's really what I'm kind of looking for. Again, I know it's from a year ago, but?
What have we done?
Chance to impact, you know? And, and I think, you know, some of it to me is communication. So, you know, what, for absenteeism and participation rates, what are our, you know, our plans to get parents more informed? Hopefully, a lot of that can be resolved with, you know, better information to parents and the impact that, that those things have on, you know, where we rank as a school. Did people have other things they're looking for from that presentation? Okay.
So I think with that said, I think what we'll be bringing to you, you know, just some, just some, just some general data on that from the last couple of years, where we've actually started to make a little bit of inroads, what we sort of, what do we attribute that to, and how do we, how do we see to continue that? For instance, with the absenteeism, we've actually made some ground on that, when we want to see how we can continue to do that. Fitness was certainly take, we took a step backwards, a little step backwards last year. We want to make sure we take a step forward. And participation rate, like you said, so, you know, we'll, we'll try to encompass what we've been doing and what we plan on adding on to that as a value add.
And what we know about the fitness thing, because not only do we go a little bit backwards, but we also support fairly low for fitness.
Right.
Although I think the whole state's for. Okay. So there's nothing else on that? Okay. Then the other update we're going to get is on the summer programs from this last summer. And so that's Extended Day, Summer Enrichment, you know, just any, any comments about Woodbridge Rec and, you know, that, you know, like, I know that's not one of our programs, but the interface with Extended Day. And then, given the discussion going on, you know, expectations for contributions to the SRO, if there is a SRO next summer. You know, these programs are obviously the programs using the SRO during the summer, since we don't, well, we do have some reading programs, you know, district programs as well during the summer, but that's pretty small. So, I mean, we've got the finances already for the summer programs, and that looks really, really good. So it's really, to me, it's a little bit of, you know, enrollment and pricing and what are we looking at for next year? Anybody have? No? Anything else for summer programs?
So, so I just want to make sure we're clear, so that's been very helpful, Mark. You know, our, our biggest programs are obviously Extended Day and Summer Enrichment.
Right.
And Recreation works hand in hand with us.
Right.
So, you know, we'll come, we'll come, you know, really just sort of a snapshot of what the programs will like, the numbers, in terms of the enrollment, the budget, how that might look for contributions towards an SRO concept for, for the summer. And we have some smaller programs, which I think we've typically not necessarily reported out. I'm thinking of last year when we, this kind of reported, the finance subcommittee. So we haven't necessarily reported on some of the smaller programs, like Summer Special Education or Summer Scholars.
Right.
If that's okay, we would probably not report on those. We'll just report, unless you want to hear about those as well. It's up to you. Just want to make sure I present the right ones.
Yeah. The thing, the only thing that I would also look for is, we already charge, you know, these programs, like Extended Day pays electricity, you know, like for the times that they're here. So there's already contributions from these programs back to the district for, not the use of the building, but, you know, the use of the resources within the building. So any information that would, you know, give us a little flavor of that as well, just to get, you know, a little bit of an idea that the, then again, you know, the SRO is a future thing, but if we're looking at that for next summer, you know, how would we look to distribute that a little bit? And then the only impact from the district program, Special Ed and the Scholars, would just be, that's a, like you said, those are small programs, but clearly that's also a percentage of what happens.
But I would be interested in knowing the enrollment in those programs, Bob, in comparison to previous years, like, are we servicing more children in special education summer programs than we were previously? And also, the summer scholar programs, are there more people taking advantage of that programming? And does that come out of our, because that comes out of our budget?
Special education is out of our budget. The Summer Scholars actually is a sort of, I'll call it pay-for-play. Parents do, we, we do provide a little bit of money, but the parents do actually, it's almost like a check that they contribute. There's a certain dollar amount that they contribute.
So I would be interested in the enrollment and in comparison to, if you have that information in comparison to maybe last year and the year before, so that we, I mean, I don't, I don't know if that's difficult or not.
We'll, we'll, we'll.
Whatever you bring would be, yeah.
Not at all.
Okay. And, yeah, because I think that would be an interesting thing for us to look at. Are we servicing more kids over the summer as well?
And, and also, the last couple of years, we have to remember, we have the program at the high school, so things look a little different in terms of enrollment over time than they normally would, because we, you know, we lost some kids and engaged some kids, I guess, you know, from that. Okay. Is there anything else about summer? New business, I just had a couple of quick reminders to everybody. When Marcia sends stuff out to us, make sure you don't reply all. Make sure you just reply to Marcia, like if she's, you know, asking you to verify whether you're going to be at a meeting or whatever. You know, we're trying very, very hard to never email all of us, you know, so try to hit just reply. Committee meetings need two board members, so if you, you know, normally, whether you can attend a committee meeting, if you're not on the committee, you know, you can attend all of them or none of them. If you're on the committee and you can't make it, just let Marcia know, so that if we're not going to have at least two board members, we can try to get, you know, another person there, so we can actually have the meetings. Yep. Marcia will send out anything that we want. You know, if you have something up against an agenda item, you know, you're doing some reading, you see something about the accountability index that you think would be helpful for all of us, send it to Marcia, she'll get it to all of us, and she'll get it in the meeting. And I think that was all the reminders I had, again, just never hit reply all, never send. Never reply to anything, never send anything. Never do that.
Thank you, isn't it?
Yeah. Please don't do that. And I think that's it, unless we have other comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Steve Fleischman and I met to talk about Woodbridge Board of Ed Community Town Series that we had brainstormed about in retreat. I don't know how that should be reported on, because we were.
So isn't that in the curriculum meeting, one of the next curriculum meetings, is the lecture series?
Is it?
Yes. Yeah. In our first curriculum meeting, I think we spoke about that.
Yeah, in October. It's in October, isn't it?
I have my notes with me, it's either October or November we were going to come back. And, yeah, I remember that.
We had, because the timing was actually, we weren't sure, I thought it was like sort of separate on the Board of Ed side, so does it fit in the curriculum, or should that just be a Board of Ed effort?
I think, I think we put it there because, Lynn, because we were looking at the fact that there was, there was a health overtones, we're looking at, you know.
Not just health implications.
But, right, but, but that's where I think it started. So, you know, it may, it may be bigger than that, but there may be a lot of different curriculum areas, overtones or overlays. So I do remember that that's where it came up in a committee meeting, we actually put it as one of our agenda items for.
We did October 5th meeting. We did talk about the lecture series.
Because we were already sort of.
To be on the agenda for the October 5th.
So, and does it seem like it should sit there? I almost feel like it's something's kind of separate that the Board of Ed as a community effort and initiative could take offline outside the committee as part of our strategic objectives and our mission-oriented tasks associated with it. Because I guess some of the ideas, we went back to the notes, was one on healthy nutrition, leveraging the town speakers, the experts in the town, and we had already laid out a couple of ideas for that. And that would be in early November, in line with the holidays, and where people might be eating more than average stuff. And then another, end of January, where we might think a little bit more about sleep and physical activity to help complement education and learning. And then May for screen time sleep as we move into the summer months. So we took, like, I guess it knows from our board retreat, and thought it was something completely offline from committee work.
Okay. I, I know, like I said, I know we had discussed it and scheduled it in curriculum committee. If that's not where we think it belongs, we can, we didn't really form a committee on that one. If we would, we just said you would, you would get back to us at, you know, the, again, like, I thought you'd get back to us at the curriculum committee with, like, ideas and stuff. If we think that we should have it as, you know, kind of a committee or a project at the board, we certainly could do that. So I don't know if people have opinions about that, or if we want to.
From what we were discussing, just, hopefully, I'm not speaking out of line, but we're so completely in sync about the fact that this is something that would be a great community invigorator, it would be a great way to bring folks together. Doesn't have to be sort of pull for program, but we could really leverage town experts that we, we know. But we like the idea of doing something sooner than later, and part of our, our goals as a board, to extend out into a public space. And it could be maybe at the JCC, or maybe at the library and other places, similar to the series that the first element, the board had instituted a couple of years ago.
Okay. So why don't we put it on the agenda for next month's, next month's meeting, but that's not until October 2019?
So the 5th is before.
Yeah. The 5th is earlier. If we could, maybe, this would be the exception to the rule, do it both. So do, you know, give us some information on the 5th, if you're, you've already got dates and times and topics. And then we can have it be, you know, the exception where something that happens at curriculum actually gets repeated at the board, you know, the board meeting. So we can put it on for October on the agenda to talk about it, and then if you feel like you're ready, October 5th will be great.
Oh, yeah. Definitely.
Okay. All right.
I guess I'm wondering, is it, is it a Board of Ed type of decision, or is it something that we just, I don't know, I just wonder, it doesn't really need a vote in any way, or?
A vote on what the topics are?
No, I'm, I'm thinking it doesn't.
No, I'm thinking it doesn't.
Right.
We already agreed as a board that we want to have this happen.
Right.
We already agreed that in one of our goals, that this would be something that we would do.
So I think we've already really voted on the existence of the process. So really now, we're talking about the execution.
That's, okay.
Execution on October 5th.
Yeah. So we'll provide you a draft calendar with, with content and all that.
Wonderful.
All right. So we will hear about it on October 5th, the curriculum play there, and then?
And then also at the October.
And then also on the October 16th, working.
Right. Because we have a more public forum here with.
What do we, what do we, what's the title of that, that agenda item? What are we calling it? Just so Marcia can?
We're calling it WBOE Town Series. But that's a whole, I don't know.
Lecture.
That's the lecture session. Lecture final goal, that it's under the last goal.
Yeah. Lecture series is what we called it in the minutes.
Okay. Great. Sorry, I missed that.
The journal minutes.
Okay. Okay. Is there anything? Is there anything else? Public comment, did I ask about that already? There's no. All right, so I think we need a motion to adjourn.
Should we adjourn the meeting?
Okay, all in favor? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you.